It is six o'clock and I've been calling this meeting into order. And please note that superintendent and all five board members are present. If you would join me for a moment of silence. Thank you very much. If you're able, would you stand and join me as a pledge of the American flag? My pledge to Egypt, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. You may be seated. Then at this time, item C is to adopt the agenda.
So move.
Oh.
All right.
Oh.
We'll second him.
I'll second him.
You'll second him?
Right.
All right, I was looking at him. He always makes... You've, uh, we have a motion in a session all in favor of adopting the agenda. Let me know by putting your hand. All board members were in favor. Item two, construction update. That's a little bit of pan you've got there.
A little bit of pan, a little bit of notes. So, um, I believe y'all probably had a chance to look at what we've sent over. This was sent over today. Uh, it's, we used this during our meeting with the high school, the athletics, to kind of discuss some of the changes, modifications that had been made as part of our discussion with the roadway. So, uh, show up all of y'all's screens, I believe. That red area of highlights, uh, those are the constraints that have been put on us by the utility companies. It's basically their roadway easement areas. So that's where we had to negotiate and work back and forth with them. Um, in this proposal, what we were showing was 200-foot softball field with this large retaining wall, and then a 330-foot, uh, baseball field, which is equivalent size-wise to what you currently have. Uh, in speaking with the team representatives, the high school and athletic director, some concern over the size of that field was expressed. Um, so what we are looking into is, since y'all have moved forward with building the practice field over by the strike zone, is can we eliminate this three-quarter practice area, slide the baseball over, and then extend the field out to be a full-size 350-foot field. Uh, so right before the board meeting started, my landscape architect back at the office confirmed that it will fit, 350-foot will fit. If we slide everything over, we can stay out of the easement. We don't have to go back to East Kentucky Power and ask for additional, uh, areas of work. So everything stays on target there. We're gonna work up a new proposal that shows you what that looks like. But we were never able to achieve a full-size field there. Three-quarters of film is always just pushing what we could do. And since y'all made the effort to go ahead and build this other larger field, and we're back to doing the practice field over, uh, beside the parking area, that's kind of a good give and take. So everybody gets the full resources for each of their particular sport. Um, so we're gonna make that change on the plan and get that updated. But is this the full size?
Uh, no, this is compressed.
Okay. Um, so there's a full-size version. This shows the whole, um, site. So in that, if you imagine, we've moved everything over. The biggest change you'll see is that the bus garage has been replaced. If you see where those two red lines are coming, that's essentially where we had planned the bus garage. We knew the gas line existed there. We thought the, uh, power line was a standard line. We found out it's a high-transmission line. So that really confined what we could do in that space and pinched us down to make that an unusable area for the bus garage. So in speaking with the district and what we could do, what we're proposing to use the board is that we look at doing a future bus garage site essentially behind where the current bus garage is, which means that we're tying that road all the way across the site. So you can see there, we've taken new drone footage of where the football field is being placed. Um, so that's where the mouse is now. It's kinda showing you where that future field is going for y'all to practice on. Very construction. We're gonna wrap the road right along the fence line. It'll pour out into the area behind, um, the existing bus garage. And that's where we eventually construct a new bus garage, bus parking, fueling station. All that could happen in that area. Do you have a question?
I'm gonna have some questions. Whenever you're ready to see your question.
I'm ready at any point, so.
You got a roadway, right? Open rate, uh, uh, pressure.
Gas line. So we've met with them. There's enough depth to that gas line that they're gonna allow us to put a road over to it.
And you'll have to be very cautious about... They won't be involved when you get there. And they will also, you'll have to be very cautious about the types of equipment you run across.
Yeah.
I know from experience on that.
We...
Other question.
Uh-huh.
So will it, if you can, back over to the bus, there you go, you can bring my man back over to the bus garage. Uh, you show a practice field in there.
Which is, yeah.
And I understand.
That's currently under construction, yes.
Okay. With the bus garage, if it, if and when it's ever built, will there be sufficient room for the building and for adequate parking?
So you say...
Or we don't, we've got, we can park our buses there without it being on gravel and or whatever. It does very little good to wash and clean up a bus and keep it nice and neat and tidy, which airbus drivers tend to try to do. And, uh, but it's kind of an exercise of futility when you're parking them on gravel. And there's a, it's, it's really tight in that area. But I see you've expanded out. Now, is that gonna mean the existing building that was originally looked at to be, had ground purchased to build on, that it will still be there?
That's currently where the mouse is located there. That's that existing strike zone.
So.
That dark area is identified.
Access will be to it. I can see that.
Yeah. So the white building is, the white square is what we'd identify as approximately the size of the bus garage itself. Rest of it becomes parking. You have all the parking that currently exists where the bus garage is now that can be paved and reworked. You know, when that project becomes reality, that's when we'll go in and that will become a design. Uh, it's, it's, at this point, we're just trying to make sure we can get access over to it. And that's the roadway. And then we'll, at a future point, when this board is ready.
Access, the gristle will be on two. Well, actually, I guess you could go over three different roads. From the bus garage, you can go to 27 on the west side. And you could go out to 39 on the southeast side. And, well, maybe that would be more northeast, I guess. And then the southeast side, you'd come out on Industry Road.
Yes.
Where they're all connected.
Uh, you have three, really three ingresses and one two egresses. We would, you know, our hope would be that, yeah, you can continue to use 27 to come down into the bus garage, but that you're trying to eliminate the need to exit out, because I think that's where your danger exists.
That is a problem. That's a business problem.
A bus dropping off in there.
Have an access road come down where they could, they could, they could go with different directions without, uh, afternoon traffic. I think early morning and afternoon traffic is when their buses are running is what, there's, it's so heavy. Uh, it's, they have a, they have a hard time in town, but that's gonna be something else that had to be addressed sometime in the future. And it'd have to be with the state highway department or local law enforcement or somebody to direct traffic or something, because in the morning it is, we've had, we have lights all the way from the entrance to Light Street Elementary all the way up into the parking lot and all the way back out down Maple Avenue, out on the 27 going southbound, uh, well, going northern. It's backed up all the way northbound, well, in front of the school and down, I have seen it around the curb. Solution to the problem is, well, that is to bring your kids to school. It wouldn't be such a heavy traffic dam. But you know how that goes. I mean, that would also help a whole lot of our problem on scheduling the buses and runs and filling up buses so that we have, don't have almost empty buses in the morning and overloaded buses in the afternoon, which happens, because it seems like more of our students ride the bus in the afternoon than ride in the morning. But I think, I think you've, for my question so far, I, I think you've pretty much covered them on that part of it. The other que, only other question I did have was of the, originally you talked about the size of the baseball field and the possible shortening of the softball field. With this change, the softball field should go back to a...
It's a 200-foot field, which is the standard. We were afraid we would have shortened it to a 190 or 185. We're not gonna have till we've checked.
Everybody should have a pathway park.
Well, that is what Kansas A prefers, and that's what...
We'd have to build a big tall wall or make a, make a...
I think it's currently what you have for baseball now. And when we spoke with the baseball team, they said that was one of the complaints from other, um, teams. Why they don't wanna come to Garrett County to play regionals is because it's a knock it out of the park kind of situation.
Or where somebody else is back going.
And then it's an automatic home. So it's not, it's not fair play to what they play on everywhere else. So by going to the 350-foot field, we're ensuring that your regionals chances of hosting your regionals, which is where your teams will be able to make back some of their profits and some of their needs to support their teams, um, this will ensure a better opportunity for that. When it comes to the roadway, if you'll, if you can show kinda where the gas line is, you'll see the roadway changes color right there. Um, what we are proposing, because we didn't have this extended road in our original concept, so this is essentially a new cost. What we're gonna propose for this project, if y'all are agreeable to it, we would like to fully grade the road, fully rock the road, but only pave till we cross the gas line and then stop. And then the rest of it will be gravel. We can do it as an alternate so that if it is affordable, we can completely pave the road. But I don't want, because we see the cost of asphalt being extremely expensive, we don't want to be locked into this essentially three-quarter or a quarter of a mile new road, and it be a budget buster. So I'd rather us look at graveling it as a base bid, which is the light gray. You see I changed it from the dark to the light gray. We would gravel up past the barn and around to the site as base bid and take an alternate cost on it. If the alternate is affordable, then we could look at paving all the way. And that's a decision y'all will get the chance to make. I would just like the okay or the understanding that we plan to do that as an alternate, not as a base cost. Because again, I'm trying to give you as many options, and y'all decide to put this project together as you can. While we're in the area, you'll see the large green box up by the barn and UK planting area. That is where we're proposing that, uh, all of our, I don't like to use the word waste material, but our overflow dirt and some of the rock and all that strategically is going to be placed. And we're basically gonna build a large flat area, much like what's up in front of the barn now. We'll add a little grading to it so it doesn't hold water quite as bad. But, um, we will basically build a larger flat area for them up there so that we're not paying to haul that, um, chop rock and dirt off. And it's just gonna create a larger area for your farm program.
So this is from the triangle section.
So you see the triangle section that's being, uh, agreed to purchase there. And really all it has done is it's allowed us to keep, and it was the conversations we had back and forth. We had the option to either buy this piece of property or build a wall. So what made the most sense to the district, and y'all decided to buy the property, which means we've eliminated the need for this expensive wall system. But because now we can go there and grade accordingly and have a, have an easier grade for that roadway that we're building out and across and not have a need for a large retaining wall system.
So this, the baseball field is gonna basically slide a little bit to the left where this...
Yes.
Is, and the softball field is gonna slide over?
It's gonna stay right where it's at. It fits where it's at.
But it, it'll accommodate what?
It'll accommodate 200-foot field, uh, two, yeah, 200-foot.
Now, does this open up an area between the two?
It does have a slight area between them.
And have, is that area...
I don't have a good dimension on it yet. I've got a screenshot of what it looks like. It's essentially probably the width of one tennis court, what it looks like in there.
I was trying to say, is it usable space?
We're, we're looking at, you know, additional batting cages could probably fit in the area. We're looking at some alternatives, but it's not another sports area. It's not large enough for that, just because of the shape, the shape of the baseball field changes when you go to that large of a field. It gets more of that original shape that we had on our design, the Fenway Park-ish style designs.
The, the last element that could work would be is football field is hopefully this time more than a hundred yard block.
It is a full-size football field. Um, and I'll be, I'm not the athletic person here, but it's a full-size football field, college or a high school level. And your, um, uh, soccer field is, is equipped, so.
That was, that was one of the, I'm sure you've become aware of it, if you weren't before you.
Part of the.
You, you, you did learn shortly there after. Yeah. It was designed a hundred yards from the golf field, which is completely not working.
So.
But, uh, with the track around it, I, I, I was thinking that it would be accessible. And it accomplishes a, really, really, looks like it's a really good multiple purpose space that you can actually have.
We feel that.
Four different things going on at different, at different times, hopefully. If we got a distraction, we play the football game, the track, we go to open, you know, we try to do a little better scheduling.
But, and that's, that's honestly though, it's, it's gonna help you on some of your sports. You've got plenty of practice facilities for that. Well, the conversations, uh, Superintendent Stoll and I had was this idea of having, why do we need all of these practice areas? Why is it important, it's important to be able to do your practice after school. All your teams can get home at decent hour, get their homework done, get beds, spend time with their family. It's not about practicing right until we drop to a bed, get up next morning, do the same thing.
Or tear it on your existing field.
You know, it's.
We've always had a problem with people wanting to use the facilities and practice facilities and all of that. And it's, it's extremely tough on a football field or baseball field or anything to have practice on it and play games on it. And then try to keep it up and keep it, keep it going. It, it could be a pretty, uh, work-intensive project. Sometimes it's, when it's ninety plus degrees, eight out of ten days in a row, in dry weather. It, it can have a toll on it unless you, you take care of it. So gonna have something really nice, which this looks really, really nice on its layout. Uh, it's probably needs to tweak itself or whatever. They always do, but.
It appears.
You wanna keep it up solid here. I, I had a long pause there and I apologize, but I, I, I'm done.
It appears at the practice field that it's being eliminated and the practice field that is being constructed, uh, by the park is, is larger.
So the prac, the practice field by the parking lot and the practice field that is currently under construction over behind the existing bus garage beside are the same size. They are, um, they are one hundred foot fields. They don't have touchdown zone areas. They're, they're your hundred, hundred foot or hundred yard. Something like that, hundred foot, hundred, hundred yard field, standard practice field size. What we're eliminating is a three quarter field, because we could never achieve a full-size practice field there.
So this one by the, uh, parking area, that.
It's at a slight skew.
Is, it's, uh, temporary. If other construction allows us to make some moves.
So it has always, it was originally proposed that we would do a an area for a future ATC there. That's what we planned. It would be a reinvestigation with East Kentucky Power at that time to whether it is suitable to them to let you be. That's one of the concessions that we've had to kind of make in that area. We feel that we can make it work. We think it'd be a multi-story facility where you would almost think of like an L-shaped building that was multi-story. Um, but we feel that, uh, it's gonna have to be a future discussion with them to get any kind of large facility. And they're gonna wanna be involved because it's kind of so close to their transmission lines. So what we've got is the footprint and that has always been there for that. And we're showing you the field because, um, it fits, but it had to be skewed ever so slightly for grading issues. Uh, just to minimize, again, not having to build large retaining walls for something that may never come. Or comes several years down the road. We wanted to be economical in this project. And then y'all can readdress some of those issues when the construction happens. So the, the field is slightly skewed. It's large enough for a field. We feel it's large enough for your future ATC, but that is a further design um, consideration when that time comes. We've got ideas in our head, but as much as I hope to still be here when y'all do that project, you or I or all of us may be gone, Governor. So, um, I'm not gonna tie you down to something that, I'm not, I don't want us to put money into a project for something that may never happen. So we have tried to minimize the work we're doing in that area. I guess is the best way I can put that.
Well, that, at these grounds, also there's, uh, you are, I hope you are, mentioned it before, you've, you've talked about it before, but, um, your hydrologist has looked at possible water flow issues in that area there. That is adjacent to the, some property that would have some problems in the past that we corrected them considerably.
What, uh, what we found when.
And we, we had a engineer that came in and helped us considerably that did, uh, their field of expertise was, uh, water flow hydrologist.
So what we found when we looked at what, how it was currently designed, you have the bow that was designed for the football field. And it naturally collects a lot of your water on the side. Its pour out or its outlet is a small retention basin that's set below it. And in our theory, you know, we've never, I've never stood out there in, you know, hour-long rainstorm. But our theory is so much water is being collected in the bow, it's emptying into this retention basin and it has constantly overflowed because that retention basin was underdesigned. And that's caused a lot of the flooding issues. We're eliminating all of that and pushing all of our water into the creek. You know, through the athletic facility. Because we're introducing all of our water directly to the creek, that's why we have built the retention basin farther up the creek to hold back all the cities and all those other property water, to give our water enough time to get out and down the stream before this water starts coming down, so that your neighbors down below you aren't being flooded. So it should vastly improve that, uh, situation.
But that'll answer some questions, I'm sure they're gonna be coming. That's just, really good. Thank you. Anybody else?
Did I answer your question? Uh, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, oh, the other thing, because of a little bit of the practice field is, is in the power, uh, right away part. Can they just practice in that little corner or should they not?
No, they can. They've given us the right way to grade within that area. We're just showing you that if it came down to building, we could never build in that area. So again, that's where I think we'd have an L-shaped style building that may be a two, two, two and a half, maybe three-story section. And then a long bay that ran parallel to the park, to the parking area. That was your high bay, you know, decent mechanics, that's the other. With the parking behind. It's kind of what we've had in our head when we look at that site, because we do have a pinch point there. Um, and then again, you know, it's that further investigation going through this process in the end. You know, I think when we talked about this, this was a ten year ago, so ten years from now, it's a, it's a whole new conversation. So we didn't wanna tie you into large earthwork development to get you a perfectly flat piece of property ready to build on for something and, and spend that money now for something that is possibly ten years down the road. So we're just trying to get you halfway there, essentially in that area, and make it usable for today.
All right. All right. Do they?
Thank you, Brad. Appreciate it. That brings us out of through to approve the AGE for survey boundary work for the new land acquisition.
So one of the things that's required from KDE on any land acquisition is a survey to ensure that we know what the boundaries are and that the, the property meets all the expectations that we have for it. Uh, the property would be where that road would be built. So obviously we need to know that AGE is the group that did the survey work previously for us, both with the original building and then with the work, uh, a few months ago. They have quoted fifty-six hundred dollars. And I've spoken with Allison Abraces. They're willing to absorb half of that cost. So, uh, we can talk to them about one of two things, uh, either them paying that amount out or reducing your, your costs to them off the fifty-five thousand dollars. And so they're, they're amenable to either one of those. So even though it's a fifty-six hundred dollar cost, the board won't absorb that entire cost. So my recommendation is that we go ahead and approve AGE to do the work and allow them to get started on that so we can move forward with the grading process.
Thank you, sir. You've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion. Mr. Berry made the motion. We have a second.
Dave has segmented. Any questions or comments?
I'm just wondering which group that is.
AGE is the same group that's been providing all of that search. It's the same.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Anybody else? All in favor, they've been on about ten. All board members were in favor. Item three is approved. Item four is to approve attorney for title work to the new land acquisition.
So again, one of the requirements from KDE is that we have someone who takes care of that. I believe I've shared with you previously that your board attorney does not do this work, so it was gonna require somebody local. We reached out to multiples, uh, and received bids from three. I'm about to pull those up so you can see them. So these were the bids that we received. And my recommendation to you is gonna be that the board select Chris Whitworth. He has a lower, uh, letter and fee simple title, purchase agreement total. Uh, he was able to pull some numbers on what the anticipated title insurance cost would be, so that's there. That's not something that he would control. Uh, and the others were asked to give us that. They haven't been able to do so just yet. And then you see what additional cost would be if we had to do something additional with those individuals. So as you look at that, he provides the lowest cost. So unless you want to go with a different attorney for a different reason. My recommendation to you would be that we utilize Chris Whitworth for this title work on the new land.
Can you hear the recommendation? Do I have a motion?
Shall move.
Okay.
Yes, he's got it. Mr. Hurd.
Okay, Mr. Hurd, can you second?
I can't.
You can say it. Okay. All right, we've got a motion to second. Any questions? Any board members? All right, all in favor, they've been on about ten. All board members were in favor. Item four is approved. Uh, item five is to approve goals for superintendent for twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, school year. Uh, Mr. Stoll has provided us with, uh, goals. Uh, he picked out goals from each of the seven standards. I've given you a blank sheet of paper. Uh, but before we do that, uh, if you have, as a board member, a goal and, and we'll add that too, then what I'd like you to do is to write on that blank sheet of paper, uh, one, two, three, and four. I'd ask that we approve four for Mr. Stoll to report on us each month, uh, as, as the school year begins. And, uh, so these four will become from that. I have one. I'll, I'll start us off and then whoever, if you all have one, it's, well, I know Dr. Lamb, you, you had one or more, didn't you?
I just had some discussion items, but I, I don't wanna just develop one without Mr. Stoll's input, but.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Well, I have one. And of course, you know, making quite a bit on, on different issues. And I shared with him, a goal that I had was to create a pathway uh, at the high school for, uh, a teacher certification to move toward, you know, getting more for our children involved in teaching. Well, that's already done, so, so that goal is that. Does anybody else have one beside, uh, the four? But, but I did find out that that one came under standard two anyway, instructional leadership, so. But anybody got anything else?
When you asked us to, you asked us to do four goals other than this.
No, no, no.
On that part of.
No. Uh, if you had a goal in addition to the goals that he had for each of the seven standards, I'd like to include them. And out of what Mr. Stoll has provided for us, uh, and what you might have to share. Then I want you to share those with us tonight too. So if anybody else has outside of what he's got, uh, you're free to share them around me. Anybody?
I'll basically say, I'm gonna be pretty straightforward. I looked at this. I looked at what he has here. And from my two cents support of what it is, uh, I won't be here to do, uh, for the full time while this is in effect, but things that I would like for him to look at, and I think he's covered pretty much. I just picked out four, four things that I think are important. Uh, and that's what, that's what I was.
Oh, that's fine.
And I didn't, uh, I think you pretty well covered. I think it's pretty well got it with four out of the seven. You pick them, which is what we're gonna do.
What's that?
Uh, four out of the seven. I think he's got a pretty full plate, just to be honest.
Yes, he does.
And, um, that's, that's not including the everyday functions of the superintendent, which is a full-time job anyway, but putting stress on, on the four points that I picked out. Uh, any of the seven would work with me, uh, I just kind of have a what I think, what I, what I would like to see. And, but I'm agreeable to whatever the rest of the board.
Well, that's basically what I've done. I've already written down my four. And, and if, if you wanna go that route on that blank sheet of paper, if you would just write like number one, two, three, four and, and just put standard one, it'd be what I've already borrowed.
Oh, that's fine.
One, two, three, four out of the seven.
Oh, that's fine.
And they're not in any necessary, uh, order, necessary order of import.
Oh, that's fine.
Did, did, did anybody else have a goal outside in mind what you go share?
I went down, I wrote down four goals. And I, and I wasn't thinking about this.
Okay.
I was thinking about, and probably what I've written down is in here because it was more intelligent than I am. Uh, but just bear with me, okay?
Sure.
And, uh, and we talked a little bit about some of this. And especially with Dr. Lamb, uh, talking about trying to create some different things for our students. And I wrote down, I'd like to even the playing field for those students who choose to enter the work world out of high school. And that these students can be seen as successful and give a status of success for choosing a vocation. Uh, you know, we've got people coming, college isn't for everyone. I'm sorry to say, uh, that it's not for everyone. I, I need my plumber. I need my carpenter. I need my electrician. I like to see that be seen as a, as success. And, uh, students not to feel bad because they choose that. Now, this may come under one of these standards.
It does, uh, instructional leadership.
Okay.
Standard two.
And that's where I'm trying to fit these things in.
Oh, that's fine.
And then this one is, is a prideful thing. I know this comes in under, want to be able to instill in our students and our community that an educated student in Garrett County can compete with anyone. And I think that's the intent of what Mr. Stoll and our teachers are trying to do. But I'd like for our students and, and community to feel that too, because so many times I've heard, uh, people, you know, come up and something goes wrong, they say, I, I went to Garrett County. I, I don't like hearing that because you can get as good education in Garrett County as you can even in the state of Kentucky. And I, and I want that pride. So I'm going out.
Well, uh, to follow up on that, uh, the young man that, uh, I might not wish his name. That's graduated from colleges and he, he works in a, in a bank, graduated from Garrett County. That's graduated from colleges and he works in a in a bank, graduated from Garrett County High School. He told me that that we were teasing about math and, you know, adding and subtracting. And he said whenever, when he was in college, I can't remember what college he went to, that Garrett County students were known as being unprepared in the areas of of math and something else. I think that's what you're talking about.
Well, part of it. Let me see. I'm going to skip down to the snicker and see where this comes from.
All right.
I like to to create an atmosphere that allows our teachers to use their talents to teach a basics of knowledge. That we don't become so standardized with the state that we compromise reading, writing, math, history, geography, science, and all the disciplines that are necessary for our students. And so I think that's what we're talking about here. I want our people who go through math classes and history classes and so forth to be just as competent and feel just as competent as anybody. And and I think they do. But I I feel like everybody needs to realize that. If you take somebody who doesn't try in Garrett County and somebody doesn't try in Danville, they're on the same page. But if you take somebody that's educated and gives that good effort at Danville and gives that good effort at Garrett County, I think they're on the same page, too. So that's my intent. I I just want to achieve that level that it's just such a prideful thing to be there. And I think so many things that Mr. Stull's doing and the different things he's created, it's kind of helping us go in that direction. And I think that's three is enough.
Anybody else?
But I I want to put some effort into that and then see where that fit into this.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Well, I I had a few thoughts. And some of these I already spoke to Mr. Stull, so they they were not new. But I'm wondering, well, first of all, I guess I have a question. In strategic leadership, you were talking about advisory council meetings. And you had actually helped to do this last year, I know. And I couldn't remember what those, what the advisory groups were. So could you list those for us?
Sure. We had parents, students, teachers, staff, community, and ethnic. And ethnic is not the right term. We wanted to make sure originally that we addressed the issues that happened a couple of summers ago. But then we were asked to expand that, so that one needs to be reconstituted.
So that leads me then to the possibility, because I like all these. If number six, the collaborative leadership, which I think this is so important, that we begin to have all of our entities working together, if that could be considered, you're, because you said community, could that not be considered as an advisory group and be included? So the goal for standard one and the goal for standard six would just be included?
Okay.
And and this is a thought. But that way, we, and I don't believe you had in mind to involve in the community, but you've got your city, county, and school district working together. I would assume that that would be a part of it anyway. Might not be as, I don't know, or maybe be thirty minutes with just these three and then bring in the other stakeholders, just a thought.
Okay.
Could could six be included? Because I think that's very important. So but it it's very important, but there were others that were more important, too. So I thought that would be a way to get that included. And I just wanted to say that I had spoken to Mr. Stull about the Garrett County learning strategies. And so many times over the years, I've heard that we just don't have consistent learning strategies. And learning strategies, and I thought it was interesting that Mr. Hart or Coach, I don't, I'm not used to Coach. Talking about talents. And for, and, you know, we had two programs that we had used that we purchased that dealt with teaching strategies and one that dealt with teacher talents. Because all teachers have talents. They'll always know what their talents are. But we don't have to pay to have these programs. But we we need to be alert to what they are. We need to have them in place and know that that we always called it a tool, a tool chest that we had strategies that we pull from. So I think number two is is so important. The non-negotiables that we know that we're going to get things. Because I know Mr. McCray has talked about accountability. All this stuff leads up to accountability. If you can't have this stuff in place, it can't get into the, into you. Your accountability piece is going to be dependent on how well teaching strategies are in place and non-negotiables and how students are instructed. So I think number standard two. So I guess I'm sort of saying standard, the standard one goal was tweaking that goal to standard two as well. And then I didn't know exactly. I even thought that seven could be combined possibly with the three. Three, seven, and one, I thought there could be some interrelatedness that maybe those could be considered. And five, with school facilities, I know that that has been a personal goal. Mr. Stull will try to keep the public informed of what we're going on. I'd like to see a timeline, maybe even a visual timeline of where we are on our activities so that there is a lot of discussion, there's a lot of hope, a lot of hope, a lot of dreams. But we're also living in a world right now with a lot of, with some confines and a fluctuation of possibilities and opportunities and funding, everything. It changes daily. So it's a, it's an interesting time that that we're trying to do the work that we're doing. So basically, with all that said, we would, about everything he had could be worked in. I did say a lot of that four. And I think that's wonderful, but I know a lot of that is already in place. It would be expanded with the grant meetings, which I thought was interesting. And of course, bringing assistant principal meetings would be good. But I'm not sure that that couldn't be worked in in some other ways. So really, with all that said, everything that Mr. Stull had hoped within his seven goals could probably, within the seven standards, could be done. So that's where I was going with that.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else?
I do. I do just have some some thoughts. I I don't necessarily have written goals that I want to ask us to adopt. But I did want to ask if, Mr. Stull, you could talk to us a little bit about this. I like them all. I wish we could adopt them all. But I mean, we want to also be realistic with what we ask you to do. And I do think that they all interrelate. It could probably be condensed. And the goals that you've written for all seven standards be tied into four that we do choose as a board to focus on for the year. But one of the the pieces that I'd like to hear you talk about is, in my experience, when we develop goals and strategic plan, we always come back around after we've developed our goal and we identify and write, literally write, and develop a measurable expected outcome. And so that might be a learning outcome. For example, if it's with standard two, which is where my heart's at, I want to see, and it resonate a lot of what Mr., the coach said about. I can't say it that way. Mr. Hurt, the coach said about, you know, pride and and recognizing value in students who choose to go into a career right out of high school as opposed to going to college. But it is all about removing barriers to student learning and and having it be recognized that when a student graduates from Garrett, they're just as prepared and equipped for life at college as a child that graduates from any other district in the Commonwealth. And I'd like to see our district rise to the top in the state. And then we all know where our state's at in the nation. So we're not saying a lot when we get to the top of the state. We still have a lot of room for improvement. And so I haven't lost sight of that either. But what I I specifically would like to hear you talk about is, so if if as the goal, you want to work on deeper learning and removing barriers for students, what do you anticipate would be, how would you measure the success of that goal? How would you say, yes, I met that goal. We've gotten where we needed to be?
So I think if you'll take a look at that, one of the things it mentions in there is steps toward working on a pilot. So when we looked at the deeper learning and the idea that we want to move into that, take advantage of the dollars that are being made available to us and us adding additional people in teacher leader roles and have this be as it says there, grassroots plan, where it's not a top-down plan, but it's it's growing out of the idea of what our teachers see as a way of meeting those goals and creating solutions to barriers. The first way that I would tell you that I think you could measure that is, are we able to arrive at a pilot that has a unified intent to address this across the district? Not as a high school plan, not as a middle school plan, not as an elementary plan, but as a collective plan. And that could fall into the areas that you were talking about with strategies and non-negotiables. It could be performance-based learning. It could be a variety of things. So I think what you look for first is, do we actually build a pilot that we were then in years two and three of the plan, starting to roll out across the entire district? The second thing that I would say is, if you're looking at that over the course of time, we would need to then identify what the barriers were, right? So before you could talk about a barrier coming down, you'd have to identify what that barrier was. So if the barrier was, is, was being talked about earlier, an area around math, if in the deeper learning, we decided that there is a lack of numeracy for our students who are entering at a kindergarten level, then how are we assessing that between first and second grade to determine that the numeracy is increasing? So if you set a baseline for where the entry point was in two years or in a year, did we move those kids greater than a one-year growth? If we didn't move them more than one year and they entered at a deficiency, then we haven't cut a gap. So I think that the, what I would suggest to you is that this group would come back with, these are what we've identified as barriers. We establish what the baseline is. And then from that, we do what you said, something that's measurable to show that that growth occurred. So I I chose math just because it was something that came up a second ago. You talked about math a minute ago. And I believe that it is an area, which is why we came back with the idea this year of doing math interventionists. So if we were going to use a math interventionist, can we see growth and what happened in the math area? This would be a little more specific because we would be saying that there is some hindrance, some barrier that was preventing that. And once we identified that, we would come back and provide evidence for you. As I think Dr. Browning has said, he wants a report on this on a monthly basis. So it, as I think about that, we may not be able to show on a monthly basis that there was a narrowing of math gap, but there could be points along the way. For example, our ready test that is given, can we show what happened with our students from the first iteration through the third or common assessment twelve weeks into the twenty-four week to a Kentucky academic standard assessment, K S A, when that happens? So I think that there would be places that we could pull that and give you a measurable. I don't have a measurable there because it's driven, I want it to be driven anyway, from what our teachers define as leading us to the point of actually providing kids with what they need when they graduate, whether that is for college or it is for vocational or it is for military, whatever that happens to be, that we have found that and we've identified that.
That's that's great. And I really appreciate hearing that because I was having trouble understanding what grassroots plan meant. But I totally support that it should come from the teachers that are face-to-face with students in the classroom every day. There's no one that can better understand where the barriers are, where the gaps are, and how big those gaps are, other than that teacher who's with those students day after day. So I just didn't understand what you meant by grassroots plan, but it's.
I appreciate that explanation.
So one more thing and one more question or or comment. And that is that I have said many times since being on the board that I would like for us to intentionally focus on our superintendent board team development. Because, you know, as a member of the board in the community, I often hear comments like, you've just added so many positions in that district and you're just spending all this money on positions. And I have to come back and with a response to that. And while, and I I have supported them because I feel like every position that we've created, and I hope we are able to sustain them, but every position that we've created, I think is going to have a positive impact on student achievement. And so that's what it's about as a member of the board for me, is driving student success and really making decisions that I know are going to have a positive impact on kids. So if we know our graduates are leaving us not prepared for math, it makes sense that we would do something unique and specific to math intervention. And so why would we not want to support that? So but for me, it would be really helpful if I could have the extra information about what's going on at the grassroots level so that when somebody in the community does say that to me, I know on a much deeper level the impact that those positions are having on our students' success. And so I feel like that comes from us developing our superintendent board team. And so, you know, we we eliminated the working sessions because we anticipated a lot of extra meetings for our facilities and our buildings. And but I just feel like, I feel like it's critical. It's really important that we have a strong superintendent board team and that when we're faced with these comments or questions in the community about what we're doing and why we're doing it, we have very good understanding of what we're doing and why we're doing it. And then we can spread that word to the community. And it's something then that it it truly becomes a grassroots effort and that it's not just, because I think grassroots means that we're bringing our families in. We're bringing our community members in and getting them engaged. And if they understand what the outcome or the intended outcome is going to be, if they can see as we go along these measurable improvements in our student's success, I just think that it strengthens our community to be able to do that. And that comes from having a strong superintendent board team. And so one of the suggestions that I was going to make is that, is that somehow we tie superintendent board team development into our objective for the next year.
So if if you don't care to, let me try to address that. We have put together some thoughts for next year, which I hope could give you some benefit to what you were talking about. So I think most of you know that we have bragged about two things that we're number one at in the state, right? The work that you have helped us with around our nursing program and then the A T C piece that we're adding for special end. You also need to be aware, if you're not, and you may very well be aware of this, we have a student who is on the student voice team for the state of Kentucky. And we have the teacher who is serving for the Kentucky Board of Education as the teacher voice. There's nobody else in the state that has that. So it's a third thing that we have that nobody else has. So I actually met with her this morning, Joanna Stevens, and asked her to plan to meet with you every other month, following a K B E meeting, to share with you what's going on. So in front of you right now is a proposed schedule for next year, where part of what we're going to look at is providing some of that information that you're talking about. So if you look, now, this is a draft. So my principals are probably freaking out right now if they're looking at this saying, he hasn't told us this yet, and they're right. But this would be an opportunity because we also told you we're going to take you back to the buildings, right? So a- as you see, in July, Joanna would be here to give you an idea of what this is going to look like from her perspective. Then in August, we'd go to Paint Lick, have Paint Lick be able to share what's going on. We'd be able to tell you what happening at the opening of the school year. September, Joanna will be back because there would have been a board meeting in August. She would be sharing with you what's going on. We'd ask you to approve a district planning committee to develop this year's district consolidated improvement plan. So if you'll look, you'll see I ready in there. You'll see the needs assessment, common assessment updates, the district improvement plan presentation, and it continues to roll through that. So the idea is that we're trying to already build an idea to give you this information. So a connection to providing updates on this. It would be built into the system to let you be aware of what's happening in that process. So that's kind of the goal. Now, again, not asking you to approve this, and I'm not asking the principals to to call tonight in a panic because we'll share this information with them. But it's the idea that this would be communicated reoccurringly, either in this setting here or in the school setting, wherever that happened to be.
Yeah, that's that's wonderful. I would suggest that we give our student a place, a voice in these meetings as well.
So we're working toward that.
Bring that student or let that student speak.
We're, she is actually going, if I'm not mistaken, she'll be at Gatineau Academy. So we don't have the ability to bring her personally. But one of the things I've been working through is whether or not we'd be able to make a connection at a distance with her, and we may be able to do that.
Along that line, and everything's well said, would we serve the purpose well of publicizing some of this through the newspaper?
So we actually sent something to the newspaper yesterday. I contacted Ms. Arnold and shared with her that we had been given the updated information around those individuals. And so she has put together some stuff, and the first one was released on our website today. But we have forwarded that onto Central Record to make sure that they have access to that. But we have forwarded that on to Central Record to make sure that they have access to that. We tried to be,
It would be Ken Naster slipping into Dan Blaiberg, I tell you.
Well, we'll give our local folks the information first, right? And then if we want to move it on, we can do that.
Okay.
We try to anticipate what you might want us to do a little bit, so.
And I think with this discussion that, uh, Dr. Lamb suggesting that the grassroots gets worked in the, in the board and the subject work together, uh, and then if we get these advisory groups in place, uh, that way our parents will have the opportunity to share, to know what's going on in a setting that's not a board meeting setting. Uh, so that was another concern that parents felt that they were able to ask questions and share their thoughts and feelings. And then having all the, this is going to make you really busy to have six meetings every, uh, one per quarter. That's, that's a lot of meetings. Um, but I, I do feel that some of these are very essential. So and I think that coupled with board, uh, working together, we all know what's going on, that that will help with communication and opportunities to, uh, feel that we're involved in our child's, uh, children's education and that we're providing a classic for our students.
And then recognizing chi- uh, children's accomplishments too, uh, college is not for everybody. And I liked, uh, if you remember where this was, the young man, they made a big deal, like, uh, student signing with the college, he, he signed with the funding company.
And signing.
He was kind of signing.
And I see no reason that we couldn't do that. We have colleges, so why would we not recognize students who make a commitment to, uh, to a job?
All right. Are y'all ready? Or anything else that you would? Just, uh, four of them, uh, standard one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, just write down your four and then we'll, we'll tally them up. But I think that everything that, and I appreciate so much what y'all share, Izzy and every one of these seven, every one of these seven standards.
You want their names on these or what do you want?
No, just, just write down, uh, whatever standard it is, wh- whatever it is, just put that standard and, and I'll get this to him and I'll let you know the results here and just make four standards we're going to, as him to report back to us. Thank you.
Yeah, I put mine together and hit it on.
Oh, you did it on that?
I have several of those up today.
Oh.
Plan to have a unified strategy from preschool to 12th grade. Because that allows you to do the accountability, that allows you to do everything that we really want to do. And, uh, it helps us to work with, uh, Mrs. Davis Sisso, our tools and our toolkit. And accountability is a part of that is, once it don't work, we need to replace them with something that does work. And the, the students that we have, the I Ready is in place. And that is a, I have always understood it to be a very good marker as far as gathering information about at what level, grade level, their, their achievement. Unless I misunderstand that, there should be some information there as far as, uh, we have done testing in the past, because I've seen somebody, through friends and family, that students are, are advised, that, and their parents advise, which is building families and community involvement. Uh, it's not passed along to everybody because privacy, but the parents and the, of the, of the students we have, that their, their son or daughter is in the third grade and they're doing fifth or sixth grade work. In this, that, or in each, in each, uh, of the, uh, programs in the office. And I think that's a great tool to work with to gauge how we need to,
Oh, we're not done yet.
We can see what's, what's going on. Work from there. And it, it, it should be a, a way to correlate along this and, and help us use our toolkit to the best advantage of our students, which should be our goal anyway. And, uh, very optimistic. It's, it's like I said, I think it's a, a full plate, plenty to do, a lot of hard work involved, but I think, Mr. Stoll is more capable of putting it all together and I'm sure that he's taken copious notes, which I've been watching as he's been writing feverishly, uh, of things that have been written down and just, uh, just more optimistic than I had been ever before. That's all I've got to say about that.
William, we've got. Oh, that'll work. That'll work.
Work on those math skills over there.
Where'd you catch that?
Out in Barry County, but, but the math is not what math is.
So there's barrier number one in math, is we allow people to say, I'm not good at math. We don't allow people to say, I'm not good at reading. So I'm going to challenge you all to take the lead and never say, I'm not good at math. Because we, we do. We have allowed kids to hear from parents who didn't succeed in math, think that it's okay not to be okay in math. And when you do that, you permit them to assume, I don't have to be good at that, right? And so one of the barriers is a mind shift, that it's okay to be good at math. And it's a mind shift to help our parents learn how to make numeracy just as important as literacy. You know, you drive down the road, how many times driving down the road do we have to count something? And we have a look at things and read things, but we don't necessarily have them do some counting. And so those would be, I would tell you that that's the type of thing we have to identify as a barrier and figure out how we work with it. And so part of the barrier is not just going to be the student. Part of the barrier can be with the adults. And how do we help parents know how to help their kids in that area? So it's not always addressing just the students, right? And so I would tell you that in a meeting, in an advisory council meeting, that would be one of the things that I would hear from those councils. How can we best and most efficiently help you be better with understanding numeracy so you can help students understand numeracy? How can you have pride in being successful at math, even if somebody else wasn't? And so I, I even had a math teacher that I talked to a couple of years ago who said, uh, as she was growing up, her mother always said, I, I just wasn't a math person. And yet her child grew up to be a math teacher. And that suggested that you don't have to replicate what went in front of you, right? If somebody struggled with math, it may have been a legitimate struggle, not saying that at all. But just because somebody else struggled doesn't mean we have to allow that to be replicated. So just as an example.
All right. Here are the four standards you all have chosen, uh, standard two, four, five, and six. And standard, uh, uh, two, and, uh, let's see. The standard two and four had, had the most.
Okay.
So it's two, four, five, and six.
I'll just share with you, uh, when I was asked to create this, it was about 15 minutes worth of work because these were things that I was already planning to do, right? So I, I want you to understand that the creation of this was simply to give you something to react to. The, the goal is that we were going to try to implement these things anyway. So, uh, the reporting on two, four, five, and six, we can do. But you'll also be hearing, hopefully, as we go through it, information on one, three, uh, and seven as well. Not because we're trying to force them together, but because it's work that we shouldn't be doing anyway. And so that's what we're doing.
When I, when I read these goals, I was reminded of reading your, uh, application for the superintendency in our district. And I read it many times, but I, I, it's unfortunate that we've had to deal with COVID. Because I feel like you would have, we would have been on the other side of measuring that success and moving out to the next level had we not had to pause and deal with COVID. So I just, I saw this plan in your application for the superintendency. Was impressed then and I'm impressed now, and I'm looking forward to being another year beyond the pandemic.
Fantastic. All of it. Another point is that the things that you started when you, when you start are starting to show up gradually. And it's going, I believe it's going to build. And I hope 10 years down the road, you'll see the success that you've created from things you started, even during COVID. And I, I agree with Dr. Lamb that, uh, the closer you can work with the board, and the closer the board can work with you, the better off the students that we have now and future students, the better opportunity to serve on the hand and the better chances of success. I say that sincerely. And I wish you the very best.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we're ready to go to item six, first reading of KSBA policy update.
Do we have to?
We do.
So item six requires no action on your part. You've been given tonight the, uh, policy updates and the, uh, application pieces as well. They are posted here, so anybody in the community who'd like to take a look at those changes, have access to those. When we have our next meeting, we will ask you to do a second read. And that second read, we then make those the official changes. These are directly from the Kentucky School Board Association. They're written in order to align with any changes that happened through the law, changes at the legislative session this year. So you have the right to look at any of these and choose not to accept something or to modify it. So please don't feel like you have to look at it and just say yes to everything if there's an area that you have a concern with. So that's why you have those. But again, the next board meeting is when we last,
When is our next board meeting?
So technically, the next board meeting is the second Tuesday in July. Back in January, we asked to do that the second Tuesday. Uh, but there could be the possibility that we might need to call one more meeting in June if we need to give some support and some help to moving forward with any of the, the projects that we have going. So I'll notify you if we need to do that. And if we do, I will bring that as a second read then.
So instead of Thursday, it would be on Tuesday?
No, it's the second, did I say Tuesday? I'm sorry, second Thursday. So the July one is scheduled for the 14th as opposed to the 12th of the year.
But I've already, I've already said that in this, but it's not.
You want me to do it? So we definitely need to have another meeting before you guys are gone, I think.
And I'll be gone the next, the next.
That's why we, you asked us to change it back in January. So that's what we had done. Say go on July.
So when are you leaving?
Fifth.
Fifth.
And I am attending a conference the 12th of the 15th.
I'll be back the 27th, but that's a little bit late. 25th or 27th, I'm not sure. My wife had told me. Uh, let's see.
Yeah, we're coming back the 23rd. But, you know, you're going to have to change it where you leave it. It's going to be a little bit of a problem.
12th of the 15th, I'll be returning on the 15th and will be back in town by. I think I get back in my sentence at 3:00 P.M.
I'm going to hope to feel down where all of y'all go.
So, uh, we'll be leaving on the 15th, coming back the 23rd.
Skimmed up my flight, so I'll be back for more meetings.
Oh, did you bless y'all?
Did, well, that's what we were supposed to.
That's what, that's, that's what we had said. So I'll send some, some dates to, to everyone. And if there is a solution, we'll work with that. But again, uh, you, you may anticipate one later in June, uh, as well. So, uh, we, we just have to wait and see. We can't take any action on it tonight anymore.
Okay, so.
This was a special call meeting, you can't.
You understand, that's true. It's taking me know what I need to be. Okay, well, you, you look it over and we'll get together. All right. All right, that brings us to item seven.
Fully adjourned, Jerry.
Oh, I'm sorry, please.
I, I wasn't quick enough on the draw. I, I wanted us in the moment of silence to remember Larry Woods and Sharon. And I was sort of thinking her surgery this soon, was it?
Thursday, Thursday.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, but I think it would be nice if we remember Larry, well Sharon, that she undergoes surgery and then Larry and his family to this time.
I won't share any details. I'll talk to Larry today. Could be a pretty serious surgery, but just pray for Sharon. Anybody else? Commissioner McQuarrie makes a note that Jerry will have a second.
Second.
Mr. Hart seconded. All in favor, uplifted and in. Thank you. We are adjourned. Thank you all, if you're still with us on social media. Appreciate you staying with us. And Brad, appreciate you coming. Keep, keep the good news coming.